Yeah, I got more plans.
Yeah.
That corner is vacant and that one is empty.
We actually plan to do some work with that.
That's a gamble.
Believe it or not, I can drive it now. I've got industrial ars, I can do a lot of stuff.
But I don't think I can drive it, so you're better off than that.
Hi, Elizabeth.
Yeah, I think she got that.
Yeah, this is that property and he lives in her house. And what used to be.
I love having a private house. Provide a similar project. No.
I'm going to splatter those numbers.
Thank you. I'm going to look for the other. I can go, yes, it doesn't make an issue. I go, no, I got all of that.
Houses, no way it's a big deal.
Obviously, yeah, but this is. The two places are the same. Okay, okay. Yeah, I'm sure. I just want to figure out, my, my, I think, okay, how many, I know we don't make that way. How many corners? I know it's not a challenge. I'm just curious.
And then, have you seen the range that you've been covering?
No. This has happened.
Yeah, around the same, it's around the tree there. It's like some of this, well, the woods and then there is the, it's sort of similar. They're part of the problem. And always haven't been able to mark it as something. So really, it's, you know. They build three thousand. Yeah.
Okay.
Robert Kraus.
Present.
Jason Blair. Melissa Hunt.
Here.
Terry Kavner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham. Glenn Lewis.
Here. Would you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a proclamation tonight to read. Whereas September seventeenth, two thousand fifteen marks the two hundred twenty-eighth anniversary, the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent docket and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebration which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas public law nine fifteen guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September seventeenth through twenty-third as Constitutional Week, and now therefore I, Glenn Lewis, Mayor of the City of Moore, do hereby proclaim September seventeenth through twenty-third as Constitution Week in the City of Moore, Oklahoma, and urge all citizens to reaffirm the ideas the framers of the Constitution had in seventeen eighty-seven by diligently protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. Approve and sign the eighth day of September, two thousand fifteen. Okay, I have somebody here to receive this, right?
I think we were going to have someone else.
How are you?
Fine, thank you.
On behalf of the city, I'd like to present this to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
You don't know what a big deal this is for us.
Thanks.
And we appreciate your proclamation and we appreciate Todd Jensen and we certainly appreciate Teresa Smith and everybody else that I've worked with, and so thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it. Steve, do you have a presentation you'd like to?
Well, I do. Mayor, we have the privilege of having Jim Corbett's wife and daughter and brother with us here this evening. Sherry had asked to come and make some comments to us, and I said they were certainly absolutely welcome. So, Sherry, if you would like to come up, and I'll have something else to say when she gets through.
Mayor Lewis, Mr. Edie, thank you for giving us this time to say a few words this evening. On behalf of the Corbett family, I would just like to express our sincere gratitude and our heartfelt thanks to the City of Moore for all your outpouring of love and concern after Jimmy's death. There were just so many gestures of love and kindness and generosity expressed towards us, and I know many of you said that you prayed for us, so I just want to tell you that we appreciate it and thank you from our family. Something else that I wanted to express is how much my husband loved the City of Moore, and he counted it a privilege and an honor to serve here. Sorry. If you wanted to see Jim Corbett's face light up, then you would have asked him about the progress of the City of Moore, and he would have been really excited to talk about that with you, and he would have told you about new businesses coming to Moore, where they would be located, and about when they'd be open. He might tell you about the newest park project, or the newest street project, or improvements in the neighborhoods. He loved the city dearly. He, uh, you would have seen him really light up if you talked about twenty-one years ago when he started work here, and the way Moore looked at that time, and compare that to the picture of what Moore looks like today. And in telling that story, he would have expressed his admiration and respect for the leadership of Moore and the management of Moore that had the vision and the stamina, and to just see Moore through such growth over that time period. And I know that he also would have given credit to the citizens of the City of Moore for their courage and their bravery in just standing side by side with each other and helping each other to rebuild and restore Moore after catastrophic disasters and more than one. And he would have pointed out how Moore is stronger and better today even than before when those disasters struck. So, to say that he loved the city is really an understatement. He was fully devoted, and he served this city faithfully and gratefully, and he was a humble servant. Last, I would like to address his coworkers. He really loved you guys. He considered you family away from home. I can tell you personally that there were many times when a coworker was mentioned, or a coworker's family member was mentioned, and we lifted up prayer for you guys in our home. So, his care for you was clear, and it's evident to me how much you cared deeply for him, and I'd just like to thank you again for extending that love to me and to our family. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, so I just, I want to echo what my mom said and, but kind of lighten it a little bit. I just want to say a couple of things that are kind of silly but just really showed how much my dad loved this city and loved you guys. Like, he got a big kick out of, we would, anytime we're in the car and we'd pass a dead animal on the road, he loved to call in a code seventy-nine or whatever he called it. He loved doing that. He loved to keep the city looking clean and fresh. He loved driving by construction sites and telling us more than we ever wanted to know about it. The silk fence, which is really just that piece of fabric down to keep the dirt from blowing, he liked to even tell us about that. And he thought it was super cool that he got to go to the new EOC and hang out when there were potential storms. So, he loved this city, therefore we love this city, and I just want to echo everything my mom said and say thank you so much for the love you've shown us after his passing, but even more importantly, the over twenty years of love you've showed to him in return here at work. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
My, uh, my perspective's a little different. I had a good friend named Huey P. Long, you guys may remember him, and one day he told me that he was looking for an accountant, and he had just moved from Mustang over here. And I said, "Well, ironically, my brother is needing a job." He was kind of on Skid Row, and, no, no, he had, he had a great job in Phoenix. I had an ulterior motive. My parents were aging and I was looking for maybe a hand, and anyway, so I encouraged Mr. Long to contact my brother, and now he was a longtime Moore employee. Were you here back then?
I was.
Yeah. Well, thank you guys so much, and gals, for everything. The police and the fire department, the day of the funeral, were really a big surprise, and we thank you guys for everything that you've done and for your kindness for Sherry. In honor of Jim Corbett, I understand you're doing something special. We are, I'm gonna. Boy, thank you so much. Yeah. Just to announce, I think the council members have been made aware of this and are certainly supportive of this, but through our partnership with Norman Regional Health System, we're going to offer the Jim Corbett Heart Scan for Health to all of our employees if they so desire to be able to get a heart scan at no cost to the employee in honor and memory of the service that Jim provided to us. I had the pleasure of working with Jim for all of the twenty-one years or so that he was here, and he was a much-loved employee here. He was a very valuable employee to us. As you certainly know, the finances of any organization, and particularly public finance, is something that's critical, that you do right, you get right, that I have and the city council and the citizens have confidence in the numbers, have confidence in the, just the information that's provided and, and, and the decisions that are made from a financial perspective. And I can honestly tell you that never once did I question anything that Jim ever did or that Jim ever told me. Well, the question is why we have to do that, but I didn't question why we had to do that, some of those things. But Jim was very much a valued employee, very much appreciated. We'll never be able to replace Jim, and I know that there was a lot of broken-hearted employees here ever Jim passed, and we'll never get over that and never forget Jim. Unfortunately, we have to move on, but we thank you for giving us Jim for twenty-one or so years. It was a fantastic ride for all of us, and we all had a lot of fun these last twenty-something years when Jim was with us. So, thank you guys for coming.
I'd just like to echo what Steve said. I was the mayor when Huey P. hired him, and he was a good man, one of the finest men I've ever met. Appreciate you coming.
Thank you guys.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Oh, Sherry? Sherry? I'm just going to give you one of these, just so you can see it and have it.
Okay, item two is a consent docket. Item A is approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held August seventeenth, two thousand fifteen. Item B, approve a partial vacation of Royal Rock Edition, Section Four plat, to remove a twenty-five-foot private road easement application by Pat Rodfoot. Item C is accept a ten-foot drainage easement located in the Belmar North Edition, Section Two, for construction and maintenance of a drainage flume application by Belmar Golf LLC Hunter Miller. Item D is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FYI two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen in the amount of four million five hundred fifty-two thousand seven hundred forty-seven dollars thirteen cents.
That's motion to agree.
All right, thank you. Thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Everybody get their claims, questions answered, any notes or changes to the minutes? If so, would you call for the vote?
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number three is considered a condemnation and demolition appeal for thirty-one oh four twin circle application by Virgil Heyman.
Mayor and council, this item was on the August seventeenth council agenda. You may have remembered that item. At that time, the council did grant the applicant thirty additional days to do work to his house. He encouraged, you encouraged him to work with the city to get a timeline prepared and to get some repairs done in the, the three weeks that we had between last council meeting and this council meeting to show his due diligence in completing the project. Since that meeting and, and tonight, you can see that there has been very little done to the house. Basically, the, what has been done in the last three weeks has been a liner placed on the decking of the roof, and the blue tarp has been taken off, which of course does make it look better, but it's certainly not going a long ways to fixing the house. We do have a call log available of all of our actions that we've, we've taken with Mr. Heyman during the last four, four weeks or so. We did speak with Mr. Heyman only a handful of times. Mr. Heyman did contact our building official on Monday, August twenty-fourth. At that time, they scheduled a meeting at the residence to go over the property and to create a timeline. Mr. Heyman met our building official on site on Tuesday, August twenty-fifth. Some of the items that were reviewed that needed some attention between now and the next, in thirty days. What was discussed was putting on a new roof, shingles, the new siding on the gable ends and eaves of the building, install a new front door, and secure the other doors. There's one to two more doors that are actually just standing open on the structure. Mr. Heyman stated that he was still waiting on bids to come back for the roof repairs, but that he may install the doors and the siding himself with him, his own crews. Mr. Heyman, at that time, couldn't give a definite timeline to be complete with the project. An inspection on September the second showed that a new liner had been installed on the roof, but that no other work was done at that time. On Friday, the September the fourth, the building official called to let Mr. Heyman know that we were gathering quotes to demolish the property. Mr. Heyman then called back to give us a timeline for repair, with that being the Friday before a holiday. The schedules didn't meet up, so we weren't actually able to speak with him on that day. Today, we did have a conversation. The building official did have a conversation with Mr. Heyman about timelines. We were hesitant to put any definite timelines in place because of our meeting tonight, knowing that we did have a thirty-day time limit on the repairs for the house, and knowing that he really hasn't taken any steps to, to do any of the things that needed to be done. We didn't want to put anything in stone until, obviously, we let you, the council, know what was going on. If you have any questions for me or what the city's done during this time, I'd be happy to answer them. Obviously, the property owner is here as well.
I went here at the last meeting, and I looked at some of the notes. How long has this house been in disrepair?
There was a fire in two thousand twelve. Since two thousand twelve, the applicant, or someone, I'm assuming it was the property owner, has repaired or replaced one of the roof trusses and put the decking on the roof. There was a big hole in the roof from the fire. They've gutted out the interiors, so the interior is just down to the studs.
So, that's, all this happened in three years?
And the current owner purchased it after the fire, correct? That's my understanding.
Do we have a motion on this? Or do we have anyone signed up to speak on this?
I want to hear it from a mayor.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm Joseph Heyman, Joseph Virgil Heyman, I go by Virgil, my middle name. I am doing things, just it's been very difficult. The dormer has been my biggest delay. Every house on the street has a dormer. The last three bids that I've got in did not want to do the dormer, but the last bid that I'm waiting for should have been in today. The guy said he's going to do the dorm, give me a bid on the dormer. I'm not sure if you're aware what a dormer is. It's the, it's the, it's another gable that comes out front possibly to give it the house more style. If I don't get the bid in, I'm just going to start putting on the shingles myself tomorrow or the next day. The problem with that is if I have to do it that way, it's going to cost me extra two to four thousand to backstep and put the gable, the dormer on, and it'll just look like a barn, sort of, with just a straight roof, so. But, just to remind the council, you guys gave me till next week to get something completely done, and so I'm still on it and I'm still doing it. I just want to let you know that.
But you've had three weeks and you haven't even replaced any of the doors. I mean, that seems like a simple fix that could have been done within three weeks. I understand the roof may be a problem, but it, it looks like none of, none of the other work has been done either. Is that correct?
Well, not totally. I had to work on the storm shelter and clean it up. I cleaned it up, I kept it mowed, anyway, but the doors, the doors aren't, you're right, the doors aren't really that hard. I could have that done tomorrow.
Now, how, how long have you owned the property?
I've owned the property for about two and a half years. Purchased it probably three months, six months after the, four to six months after the fire. Took me, took all my savings to put the trusses and the decking and to drive in, and ran out, ran out of money for the shingles at the time, and I've been scraping along trying to get past that point.
And did you know, did you know what you were getting into when you bought it?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I just, not quite as much as I thought it would be. I mean, I thought it would be not as much as it is being. Yes, you're right, there is a level of not being prepared for part of the.
You kind, you kind of understand the situation we're in here.
Yes, I understand. My neighbor's been very patient with me, and I apologized to him tremendously, but I am on it. I am doing it.
Mayor and council, I made that visit out there, that Friday with the building official. That storm shelter was completely full of water. I think there was no door to be seen, and there's insulation in that backyard. I guess you tried to salvage out of the house that's covered. It's a haven for rats and rodents and winters coming on, and the amount of work that's been done out there, I would gauge maybe two months worth of work. That's removing the debris from the fire and putting a lot of part of that wood we got back. But, the insects are about to be borned. How are you coming?
I'm sorry, the what?
The insects, the gable end.
Yes.
I mean, it doesn't appear to be straight for a roof.
Okay, well, no one's told me otherwise, but I've got, I've got the material for the gables.
Been very little work occurred in three years.
Do we have anybody else want to speak on this issue?
I'm Kathleen, carefully, the thirty-one oh nine twin circle. He has been there twice in the past three weeks. There's been one man that came over and walked on the, on the roof and pulled off all the blue, whatever that was. He was there two days, they mowed the yard, and he emptied the shelter. He pumped that up. Other than that, he's done little bit of nothing. They didn't mow the backyard. There are no doors going in from the outside into the garage or the backyard. Already, since they put the tarp on the top, it's already hanging down right where the door should be, like it's torn, it's just, it's just hanging. From my part, I'd kind of like to see it gone. I put up with it for three years, and I'm just kind of tired of it. He's not making any effort to come and do anything. He might show up and stay thirty minutes, and he, he, but he didn't do it. So, I mean, it's up to y'all, but I'm tired of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I live at thirty-one oh eight twin circle, so I live next door to, to the property. I've worked with him for the last two and a half or three years. I've given him, I've let him use my water, I let him use my electricity, and very little's been done, and I know when we had our last meeting, seemed like that, that Friday after that, he had a roofer come by by the name of Jay to give him an estimate and stuff, and Jay was ready that next day to put the roof on. All he had to do is tell him yes, but he's gotten probably five or six estimates, and he just procrastinates. He just, you know, I'm just, I'm tired of it now. Something needs to be done. I've been over backwards. I don't know what else to do other than rely on you guys.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
I, you know, last meeting, you know, I think we made a good, good made gesture to give him some time to at least get this thing started, and I, I, I'm just kind of flabbergasted that nothing has happened after we kind of drew the line in the dirt on that day and so forth, and knew that we talked about the next council meeting, but we said we was going to review it at this council meeting, didn't mean we was going to automatically extend it to the next council meeting, and just nothing happens. And I know, and I think that there's other people here in the room, that if I was looking for a roofer who would root for, and I can find somebody tomorrow, I can get started, and that's just not happening. Just taking, taking bids, I'm not sure we take bids around, but on a project like that, you don't have to take a lot of bids, so I, I'm personally ready to drop the hammer on it.
Okay, you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the staff's recommendation to start condemnation proceedings on this house.
Okay, thank you. Hold on a second. We have a motion and a second.
Just to be clear, the, this is your, you're going to uphold the findings, the administrative findings that the property is condemned and order it to demolition?
Yes.
The finding, the process has already started.
Okay.
So, that might be a, might be your motion.
Okay.
So, give your chair over. Be clear, your honor, so you have to give me the next week.
So, we've given you two and a half years. You told me at the last meeting, or I asked you specifically, one thing, if you were going to live in the house, you said yes. Two things, do you have the money to finish it? And you said you had insurance money.
No, I did not say I had insurance money.
That's why I might know true fact.
Well, I just don't think you might have thrown a hammer.
Nothing's happened in three years.
Like I said, I put the roof on this week.
Well, and you're not worried, you said you could get the doors on tomorrow, but so why didn't you do that three weeks ago?
Well, the front door was what I thought you guys were worried about. The front door is covered and secured. The, the back, the back doors or inside the gate, the gate hasn't been secured totally, but it will be in the next couple of days. I think the doors, that's an issue. I didn't know the inside doors, inside the gate were an issue.
Well, the windows are in.
I'd say the appearance of the house is an issue. Windows are still in, they're just boarded up from behind. They're in, they're actually in.
We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Terry Kavner?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Excuse me, item carries.
Can I say something?
The issue's basically over now. I asked for people to speak while ago.
So, I stopped.
Thank you. Item number four is approved FYI, excuse me.
They're in, they're actually in.
We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Terry Kabner?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Excuse me, item carries.
Can I say something?
The issue's basically over now. I asked for people to speak a little ago. Thank you. Item number four is approved FYI, excuse me, FY15 and 16 Community Intervention Center Partnership and Service Provider Agreement with Crossroads Youth and Family Services in the amount of $60,000 to house detained juveniles.
Mayor, this is the contract that we do each year with Crossroads Youth and Family Services to provide a location for police officers to take juveniles to whenever they're arrested or detained. So, it's, it's the same thing we've done for a number of years. The only difference, this year, the contract for several years has been $40,000 a year. They ask for an increase in that amount to $60,000 a year.
And is it because they lost their state?
And what they explained to us was that they have had a shortfall budget cutback from the state in state funding, which many nonprofits have had that. And therefore, they've had to reduce the hours of service and basically reduce the service levels, which we're not wanting to see. And so I think we're going, we're recommending that you approve this. But it's not something I think that we would want to see continue to, to go up.
Hi, Chairman from Crossroads Youth and Family Services, Director of the June 11 Intervention Center in Norman. Yes, sir, a couple of years ago, the state cut the contract back to about $68,000. We asked Norman to increase their contribution to $60,000 last year. And this year, we're asking more to increase theirs to $60,000. This would allow us to open up an extra day of the week. Last year, we had to shut down for two days a week due to the funding cut. And we diverted those kids to our Emergency Use Shelter in Norman. But what we find is when those delinquent kids come into the shelter, they want to beat up and bully the abused neglect kids. So, we would like to open that facility up and open for an extra day to allow law enforcement to place to take those juveniles, which is more appropriate for them.
Do we have a motion?
I'd like to say thank you very much for what you guys do.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Very needed and very valuable, so I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? No, would you call for the vote?
Terry Kabner?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Excuse me. Item number five is, excuse me. Item number five is discuss and consider approval of a memorandum of understanding to create a regional transit authority task force for the purpose of developing a regional transit authority in central Oklahoma and authorize the expenditure of $31,165.97 in the FY15, 16 contract, uh, here to support said task force.
Mayor John Johnson with ACOG was scheduled to be here this evening and he had something come up that he was not able to be here. I told him that we would go ahead and present this to you. If there's any questions or concerns that I can't address, then he can come back at the next council meeting. But you may recall that Mr. Johnson came to a council meeting a couple of months or three ago and updated us on this. This is a process that's been going on for actually quite a number of years, actually, but gathered more steam of late with regard to really the beginning stages of setting up a transit authority for the Oklahoma City metropolitan area. The kind of the, the most recent activity with it is the study that was done to identify the commuter rail corridors that exist, one of which is the Oklahoma City to Norman corridor through us, obviously. And so we definitely want to be a part of whatever goes forward in terms of looking at these issues, ultimately be a voting member on a, a task force or a authority when and if one is created and, and be a part of that process so that this would begin that process. The process will continue even if we're not a part of it, but I think we should be a part of it.
I was on the original committee of this when it started eight years ago, a little over eight years ago. The problem that I have with it, and I still have the same problem, we do not have a station anywhere in the 30-year plan. So, this will go through more. And it goes from Norman, Oklahoma City, but there's not a stop there.
It's my understanding that, yeah, and I think we would need to be involved with that process to make sure that there will be one. But it's my understanding that they've identified a potential station site in Moore. Now, there's not a station in Moore, obviously, but there's not a commuter rail system, there's none of this. And we're talking about a long-term horizon here, probably many years before there would actually ever be commuter rail coming through here.
Well, I, I don't expect to see it in my lifetime. But at the same time, if Moore is not part of it and at the table, then we don't have a chance of having a station probably. And I think it's vital for this community to be a part of that system and so forth because when we look 20, 25 years down the road, transportation will be much different than what it is today. And we've got to recognize the fact that most of our people.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that. It says, I, I had problems with some of their ideas that they were going to start off with. The first commuter rail that they're going to build is from Oklahoma City downtown to Tinker. And they were going to drive downtown, park their cars downtown and go to Tinker Air Force Base. Well, Tinker is a closed base. You can't just drive a train into it every day. And the other thing is, that should have been going from downtown Oklahoma City to the airport if they were smart about it. But they didn't want to hear that either. And it's like, if we're going to get left out of the stations, the train track still goes through every day. And we just heard a train. But if they're not going to stop, it does us no good for us to spend $280,000 overall with a five-year contract.
The only thing that you're committing to in terms of funds with this memorandum of understanding is for a three-year period, the 31-something thousand this fiscal year.
The text he sent me was over five years. It's $281,000 from Mr. Johnson, so.
I know what the MOU says. And it says 30-something thousand this year is about just under $60,000 next year, next fiscal year. And the following fiscal year was just under $40,000, I believe. I, I, I'd have to look and see what he's talking about, Mayor.
Okay. Well, do we have a motion on this?
Now, if we get, and if we consider this approval and things start getting really costly and we see no benefit, is it something that we can not do in the future? Say two years down the road, if they want another $60,000 and we decide it's not helping us at all, is that something we can back out at that time?
Well, certainly you can, you approve the expenditures or not. So, you can decide if they come and ask for additional funds, whether to provide additional funds. I, I don't anticipate that happening.
According to this motion, we're not committing ourselves beyond this $31,000 this year. Isn't that right?
In terms of budgeting, actual budgeting, yes.
The MOU's for three years though, correct?
MOU's for three years. And the MOU is just saying that we'll participate in the task force, which is the precursor to the creation of the actual regional transit or metro transit authority, whatever they're going to call it. That's the, that's a legal entity that would be created at a later date, much like any other authority that would exist, that would cover multiple communities or multiple jurisdictions that the city then can choose to participate in or not later. However, with that having been said, there's no question going forward, at some point in the future, there will be additional funding required, particularly when and if there's ever an actual project, the construction of a project and the ongoing operational cost of a project, again, some number of years down the road.
And I have no problem in delaying this, so John Johnson, you can come back in here and talk to us further about it.
I, I think he probably could perhaps better address the mayor's questions than I can.
I see no reason to spend $31,000 for anything if you're not going to give anything for it except a study that says we're not going to get anything. So, I would like to hear him.
Table it.
Yeah, table this, can we table it?
Certainly, absolutely.
I'll make a motion to table item five.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
To the next meeting.
Would you call for the vote, please?
David Roberts?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Terry Kabner?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item is tabled. Item number six is consider adoption of resolution number 83015 declaring various iPads purchased on or before March 1st, 2012 as surplus and providing for their disposal information technology.
Mayor and council, this is to declare all those iPads that we purchased for the police and fire. We purchased about 80 of those, basically any of the iPad ones or twos that we purchased and declare those as surplus.
Now, when we bought these, we bought this, on a lot of these, we bought a lot of special cases for these. Are we still keeping the cases?
They don't fit the new iPads.
They won't fit the new iPads?
They do not.
Because the cases cost about five times more than the iPad did.
Actually, no, they didn't. We bought the cases, were about, I mean, we've.
Because I got several emails on those when I bought them, because they were called iron something cases. And they were for the police department.
What we bought were, we bought some mounts, which were about, about a hundred dollars for the mounts. And most of those mounts we can actually reuse, it's just the facing of that. But the casing part of that, they were about $50 per case.
Okay, my fault then, okay. So, we have a motion to surplus these?
Motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
What, what will we do with them?
You know, Randy, the, the charter's pretty clear about surplus equipment. What do we do to, most of it's auctioned off, it's more than $25?
As in excess of $500.
Excess of $500? Is that accumulative or one?
Property in excess of $500, so we're probably best to give them a lot. If I would take a bid.
Okay.
One of the things that we've talked about was doing a employee buyback for the ones that are still viable and letting the employees that had them purchase them back at the equitable price for what you can get selling them on, on, you know, as a buyback on the website.
That would be a question, Randy, can we do that since we just?
I talked to K O. about that before K O. left and he, and he said it was good.
I got to hear it from Randy though.
I'm with you, I'm just saying. Ajecto, ejecto.
As far as disposing them, yes, they'd be a waste.
Okay, all right. I, you know, I just got to hear that from you to make that legal.
We've done, we've done things like that before. We disposed of the firemen, where we have dealers.
Right.
Beyond, and they're locked. They can take them good with bad, or they exchange them out for, you know, new firemen.
Okay. All right.
I will second the motion.
Okay, thank you. So, we have.
Oh, was I?
We have a motion and a second.
Okay, thanks. Would you call for the vote, please?
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Terry Kabner?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number seven is consider more vision 2020 Comprehensive Plan Amendment Number 50 located in the southwest quarter of Section 25, Township 10 North, Range 3 West, being north of Southwest 34th and east of Eastern Avenue from low density residential district to medium residential district and medium commercial district. Application, application by Stephen Hedley and Planning Commission recommended approval of this item for three.
Mayor and council, items number seven, eight, and nine on your council agenda are companion items. The proposed development consists of approximately five acres. This property is located north of Southwest 34th Street and east, on the east side of Northeastern Avenue. The lot is currently vacant. The applicant is proposing to develop the property as a 16-unit duplex housing development on the north three acres while reserving the south two acres at the corner of Southeastern and Southwest 34th Street for general commercial uses. Public water and sewer must be extended to serve the site. Access will be from Southeastern Avenue with a secondary access for the commercial property on Southeast 34th Street. The comprehensive plan does call for this location to be urban density, urban density residential of low intensity. Basically, R1, single-family uses. The preliminary plat is just for the duplex development. It does not include the commercial property. It includes eight duplex lots or 16 units on three acres. This is a total of five units per acre. It's very similar to R1 densities. The subject property is located in a growing area of Moore with higher density developments, including the higher density patio homes and duplexes to the south of this property with the Apple Valley development and also the Katy Ridge duplexes. In the case of this application, the site does abut single-family large acre residential developments to the north while medium commercial land use designation is present to the south and the southeast of the site, basically on two of the other hard corners of Southeastern and Southwest 34th Street. Due to the growth trend in this area and a mixture of land use densities and medium commercial in the hard corners, staff does recommend approval of this application. We did have a lot of discussion at the Planning Commission on this item. There were several neighbors present to speak against this application. They cited concerns with the C3 designation for the hard corner and potential uses that can go in C3. They also cited concerns with increased traffic, duplexes not being compatible with the surrounding residential homes and also drainage. Drainage was a lot of discussion at the meeting. The Planning Commission did recommend approval contingent on the drainage study being provided at the final plat stage. They were, wanted to make sure that the drainage would not negatively impact the properties, especially to the north. Since the Planning Commission meeting, the neighbors have submitted a protest. I have given you a copy of the letter and also of the protest map. The protest map, I will do a little bit of an explanation on the map. There is a total protest area, which is 300-foot radius around the subject property. This is 20.1 acres. The, the, the property owners did submit protest letters within that 300-foot protest areas, area of 7.88 of the land areas. That's 39% of the required or of the protest area. You might remember that 51% is the required area of protest to make it a super majority of the council to vote in favor of the application to pass it. So, it doesn't meet that 51%, however, is still significant. A lot of people signed the protest petition. And I did also include what we would consider the unofficial protest lots in green. They are within the Lake, Lake Woods addition and also some in the Apple Valley addition. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them at this time.
Elizabeth, two things. One, what's your, some of the businesses that can operate in C3 zoning?
C3 is our most broad commercial category. So, it could be anything from a dry cleaners, maybe a barber shop, all the way to a gas station that operates 24 hours a day. It's very broad, it could be any of those things.
Another question I have for you. Have you looked up the numbers by any chance? Forgive me, I'm not a person. What percent of the homes have filed protests? Like how many that are? Because I know we go, I know the charter goes by the.
Right.
Square foot, but I'm curious as to how many of the homeowners, because some of that property didn't have homes on.
Correct. You know, that's a great question and I did not run those numbers.
Okay, that's fine. I'll count it real quick.
Okay, I'm sorry.
The discussion at the Planning Commission meeting, was it more, were they against more the residential or was it the commercial that was the hangup or was it kind of a combination?
My feeling was it was more towards the commercial. But I do know that the residents are here and they, I'm sure, will explain that.
Okay, we have several people signed up on this. Well, there's a couple. Jeffrey Fox?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and other city council members. My name is Jeffrey Fox and it's my wife, Susan. She won't say anything except she's here to keep me in line. We live at 3408 Elmo Way. And if you look at your plat map and look to the west of Eastern Avenue, you'll see the Lake Woods Home Subdivision. Look down at the lower left-hand corner where the lots start, count up three lots. That's my home. So you see that our house is directly impacted by the rezoning request.
I did want to ask about, you stated thirty-nine percent, you only got thirty-nine percent of the signatures?
You told us that we had to get fifty, over fifty percent of those individuals notified.
Fifty-one percent, right.
Which we did.
Right.
We got thirty-two out of fifty-five notified.
Right, it, it's actually popular in the way in the area around the protest area.
Wait, wait a minute, I contacted, what, what, what's your name?
Nora. Nora. No, my name's Elizabeth.
Okay, Elizabeth, I contacted Nora, she sent us a list of all the people that we could contact, there were fifty-five people on the list. We got thirty-two signatures, that's more than fifty percent.
That's what she told us.
We went by what she told us.
We actually have written instructions on how to do a written protest, and if, if those were, is that, was that sent to you at all?
Yeah.
The instructions, okay, that tells you exactly how to do it. It is based on the land area within the three hundred acres.
We're going by the information she gave us.
Yeah, so...
We got thirty-two signatures out of fifty-five.
So we expected it to be a formal protest. So we were given erroneous information, but that's neither. The rezoning request has taught us a lot, and we did learn a lot during the process, and we met a lot of wonderful neighbors, and we did meet a lot of wonderful city employees. Yeah, and, yeah, it was great, y'all helped us out a lot. There were some general concerns that we heard about when we were, I was doing some talking on our HOA Facebook page in Lake Woods, and there were some general, and the surrounding subdivisions that we would like to make you aware of, but others might wish to speak about later, so we won't generally go into a lot of detail on those. The general concerns we heard about is there are some number of children that must walk down thirty-fourth street every day in order to attend school at Broadmore Elementary School. Now, I know that I've read some things here recently on the HOA Facebook page about the school buses, but not all of the kids ride the school bus. Some parents who walk their kids to school and others drive their kids to school, but in some cases the kids walk to school because they enjoy it. But there is a problem, there are no sidewalks along thirty-fourth street, and there is that creek that you, I don't know if it shows up on your, on your map there, but there is a creek that's just on the other side of the commercial plot, and it is also on the other side of the duplex plot, that there is nothing that goes across it other than the road, so the kids have to walk out onto the road to go across the creek. And if you put a commercial enterprise there that is in operation, when they're going to school in the morning, it makes it entertaining for them. Okay, as mentioned above, there's a significant concern about the increase in the traffic flow in this area. There are four residential subdivisions, Lake Woods, Kensington, the Settlement, and Katy Ridge in this area that use thirty-fourth street on a regular basis. On occasion during heavy rains and then when the construction of the I-35 overpass is in process, southwest thirty-fourth street will be closed and access to the service road and all traffic will be forced to use thirty-four, or excuse me, Eastern Avenue instead. If there is a high-use business such as a gas station or fast food restaurant at this location, then traffic flow will be disrupted, traffic jams will become the normal course of business, especially if there's still that four-way stop. And eastern will not be widened until five to ten years down the road. So you're looking at a two-lane road trying to take care of traffic from four subdivisions going up and down eastern, and also handle the possibility of business depending on how far in the future that he wishes to open it. With the building of duplexes in the residential area that has a significant number of custom-built homes, such as are built in the Lake Woods subdivision and home on acreages such as that lie in eastern avenue, this will cause a decrease in the value of the homes. For example, where my home sits along eastern that backs up to where the duplexes are going to be, I'm going to have a problem if you put a fast food or a gas station on that corner because not too many people are going to want to buy my house. So I'm going to have to take a hit if I try to sell it, which is going to reduce the value of the other properties around me because they take that overall average of what the value of the homes are. With the building of a twenty-four hour business along with the increase in traffic, there will also be an increase in noise and light pollution for those residents directly across the street. With the building of duplexes and commercial buildings on these two lots, there is concern it will cause problems with the drainage for those residents upstream from the construction. There's already been some issues in the past when the drainage creeks were allowed to become clogged. There were several residents that stated they purchased homes in this area due to being close to amenities, but the area still had a rural feel to it. Our primary concern, my wife and I, is, my wife enjoys sitting outside on our patio on a regular basis, and the traffic is already becoming a problem. With the high-use business, the traffic will increase to the point where she will be unable to enjoy sitting on a patio anymore. She has done several informal counts on cars passing by on the road, that being eastern avenue, between four and six P.M., with an average of seventy cars going by in a ten-minute period. That's now. If there's a twenty-four hour business put on the commercial lot, then there will be a problem for us with noise and light, I just read the, no, we are already sleeping with two fans to block out the noise of the traffic now. I have problems sleeping as it is, and I have to take several medicines to help me sleep. It's going to become more difficult. There is a concern with the possibility of us wanting to sell our house in the future after we retire. If there is a twenty-four hour business across the street, as I've already mentioned, it will have an impact on us being able to sell it. We'll probably have to take a loss. We feel that approving this rezoning application will be bad for the area and respectfully request that you vote no on the rezoning application, and we do thank you for your time to listen to our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
I have a question for you, and I'm not trying to be smart, sincere question. What did you think would happen to that piece of property at some point in time?
It was ours, it was zoned R-one when I bought my house. I expected houses to be on there. Yes.
And we're looking at eight duplexes, we're talking sixteen, so if we went homes, you would have probably a, maybe a few less, but a similar number as far as traffic.
Right, but we also expected it to go four lanes.
Commercial.
Is the commercial.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Help me out here. This may be my problem. Are we dealing with duplexes, are they commercial, or are we dealing with both?
The applications were both, so you cannot separate them, right? It's a package deal.
Okay, okay, I was thinking we were just a duplexes.
We have, we have no idea what the commercial's for?
The applicant is here, but he's in the Katy, has no user...
Okay. Before you guys sit down, can I ask you guys a question? You said you were able to get thirty-two of fifty-something homes? Did you, were you not able to reach other people, or?
Well, we had Shar, she had to, she signed up, went to the out-of-town addresses or had P.O. boxes. I personally went through the neighborhoods, locking off the neighborhoods, to all the people that were on the list I was given, and I got thirty-two signatures out.
So you don't, the people that didn't respond, you don't know if they're in favor or not?
Right, right.
They're never going?
Right, we didn't, some of the people didn't respond. I think I had a couple of people that said no, they didn't want to sign it, which I was fine with.
Gotcha, okay, that's it, okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Shar? McLaughlin.
Hi, my name is Shar McLaughlin. I live at thirty-two hundred Southeastern Avenue, so I am the acreage that is touching this area. Matter of fact, there are three one acres right next to this area. All three of those homeowners did sign this petition. Yes, I did see the written instructions, and I thought we had met them hands down, no problem. Fifty-one percent, and out of those fifty-five, seven to ten of them, they were not reachable. They were P.O. boxes, they're out of state, they're in different cities, even though I mailed them a letter. Now, one of them actually did mail one of the letters back, but, you know, we had no phone numbers or email addresses to really reach them.
Are some of these rental homes?
I'm sorry?
Are some of them rental homes?
Well, I wonder if, because, you know, this is a new area, if some of them were builders?
Okay.
And so really, out of the fifty-five, we had about forty-five people that we could contact, and thirty-two out of the forty-five signed. So to me, my math, that would definitely be fifty-one percent. I am obviously against items seven, eight, and nine, and I worked with Mr. and Mrs. Fox to contact the people in our area. Now, all three of the acreages right there next to us, we're, you know, definitely against both the duplexes and the commercial property, because when we bought our homes, you know, we, one, we were under the impression, you know, that it was a wildlife refuge, but then even on the worst-case scenario, it would be single-family homes, and that's the worst-case scenario. Just right there on Eastern and Nineteenth with just, just a, you know, not too far away, we have one of those gigantic new Seven-Elevens, and the traffic right there is wild. I mean, there's no way that Eastern and Thirty-Fourth can handle that traffic right now. I mean, it's just not, it's not possible. I can barely get out of my driveway right now because the traffic is so bad, and that's without the duplexes and the commercial property. The flooding is a huge issue. And I was trying to think exactly what year, what year this was, but I'm gonna say approximately five years ago is after one of our famous tornadoes, except for not one of the big ones. But that area, I mean, it got flooded really bad, and the city came in and put in like a concrete drainage ditch that went all behind those houses there, but it was not allowed for them to go onto this property, so now all of it's backing up right there, and my house, my backyard is like a river, I mean, a swift-flowing river. I mean, it's amazing, it's like nothing I've ever seen. So it's actually worse than better, and the area just hasn't been taken care of, and so I don't see that it's going to just all of a sudden be taken care of. And so I'm very worried about the drainage. Even my storm shelter flooded with water in this, this last rain. So it's very, very bad. Even in the front of the houses, we just have these little tin circle things that go down the streets, and they cannot handle the water. So we just, we have some major drainage issues in this area. The increased light, the noise, I can't imagine it next door to our acreages, I mean, that's definitely, I would have never bought there, you know? Now, of course, this area has exploded since I've lived there, but they've been, they're nice homes. I mean, they're nice, custom-built homes. And so there's no way that I personally would want, and neither do my other neighbors on acreages, want to live right next door, you know, in such a small area to duplexes and a commercial property, which, you know, we've heard will be some type of twenty-four-hour gas station, convenience station, and, and it's even still very dark out there at night, so I cannot imagine even, and just the increase in everything. We don't even have streetlights right there, and the streetlight at Nineteenth and Eastern is a nightmare, I mean, it's dangerous, and that's right now. And we just, as it's standing, we can't, we can't handle an increase in traffic in that area at all. So I guess that probably summarizes it, but yes, I am against all three motions, and I would sincerely appreciate your consideration.
Okay, thank you. I don't have anyone else signed up? Would anyone else like to speak, ma'am?
Well, she's coming up, Mr. Edie, have we done a study on the traffic before that Seven-Eleven went in, and what's happened after? Do you have any idea what impact that has had?
We've not done a study, no.
I didn't, thanks.
There's been a significant amount of increase of traffic at the intersection, there's no question about that. I mean, it's, I would say, one of their busiest Seven-Elevens that they have, and it's very busy all the time.
Hi again, I'm Kathleen Metcalf, live at thirty-one oh nine Twin Circle. My house backs up to the creek that they're talking about. It was paved about ten, twelve years ago. My husband's been gone since eight, and it was there before he passed. I live behind the street hall, big pond there on Eastern. I'm the one with the big orange shed in the back door. I also live across the street from the burned-out house. I've been there thirty-five years. I bought that house in April of nineteen eighty. I'm the only one that's been there that long in that whole addition. I don't, I don't want that in that corner. There's a lot of traffic. They put general dollars to right up at the one of the two outlets I've got are coming out of that addition, which is right in front of St. Thomas. You have no idea the traffic. You have to make your outings at certain times of the day so that you can at least halfway get out of that addition. There are kids, before they paved it, it was dirt. I had a four-foot fence, chain link, across the back of my yard, which is now three-foot high. You can step over it. Kids ran down that, that creek with, on their, on their dirt bikes, on their three-wheelers, on, on all these kinds of things, and it's a lot of rapid. It's, it's just not a good place for that. Eastern has an ungodly amount of traffic. The light on Broadway and a hundred and forty about, Eastern is atrocious now. You need turn lanes going both, all four directions, and that hasn't been done. I remember a car wreck that killed a person when there were just stop signs there, and they finally put stop signs in, and there's been numerous wrecks on Broadway. People come through my addition wanting to get out to where they, like they can go to Eastern, they can't get through out of my addition. You have two roads, St. John and St. Thomas, to get in where I live, and I live on a double cul-de-sac. There shouldn't be that much traffic going through there. I mean, we see people coming from all over the place, and they don't know they can't get out through there. There are no signs in that whole addition that says no outlet back there where my street is, nothing. I'm just asking for help here. I know the people that live closer to the corner, have more expensive houses. I probably won't be here long, maybe another five years or more. I'm sick, my, my son lives next door to me. He's gonna want to sell his house and my house when I'm gone. It's nothing, you know? It doesn't apprise for much now with the burned-out house across the street, because I tried that in two thousand twelve. So if you put this on the corner down there, I'm pretty much screwed, me and my son both, so. I would appreciate the help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a comment, I'm not sure I have a real problem with duplexes per se, if I've been paid to change, but I think I do struggle a little bit with that corner being commercial. It is a corner that I regularly go through, usually at slower speed than...
On a bicycle.
Than a car. But I am struggling a little bit with the commercials.
I, I think I feel the same way, the duplexes aren't a problem for me, but the commercial, I can see, especially a commercial that could be anything up to twenty-four hours and a gas station or something.
Steve, five oh nine Southwest Thirty-Fourth, I'm one doing this, and I'm also live there. The two corners to the south of me are already C-three, and with Thirty-Fourth Street coming through, you're going to four lane, that traffic is coming whether you approve this today or not. Those changes are going to happen. What I'm wanting to do is, and I don't know what's going to be on that corner, I don't plan to develop that corner, but I would like to be able to be in competition with the two C-three corners on the far side if commercial does come... but I would like to be able to be in competition with the two C-three corners on the far side if commercial does come down there. I wanna be able to have the same ability as those two owners to compete for the business that the commercial will bring in. And it will come in. Eastern, I'm sorry, I don't know about the petition, I've been out of town. I thought my engineer was going to be here today, but he's not. So, Eastern, as I understand from the commission meeting, is going to eventually be four lane. So, all of those things are coming regardless of what I'm doing. The duplexes we set up, we set up with a lower density than the majority of some of the housing in that area with the common area to help with water flow. I spoke in the past with Mr. Drake about the fact that they weren't allowed on that property to work with that creek. He knows that I don't have a problem with that and I'm more than willing to go to the city to help get that cleared out. A lot of water here, but the water coming down is very north of me. And the water they complain about comes out of the neighborhood north of me, not from my property. So, I don't believe my property is causing this huge flooding to the north. I think it's the amount of water coming off of the neighborhoods up there that just happened to end up straight down through that Thirty-Fourth Street creek. Goes underneath Thirty-Fourth Street. What I'm looking at, it's, instead of putting sixteen homes, which I couldn't afford to do anyway, eight duplexes is much more affordable for me, still keeps the density of population down to just sixteen homes, sixteen families in there. My general plan is to run still fifty-five and over on senior housing, but it's not gonna be a senior property. It'll be, but my intention is to keep it fifty-five and over.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Anybody wanna make a motion?
Yeah, I see some valid issues on both sides. I agree with the general opinion. The flooding, that's the main thing. Is it gonna be cured or actually increased by the improvements in this property? The flooding is coming elsewhere. So, I don't see that as an issue. The streets, to have a commercial development there for the streets as they are now doesn't make sense. I think sometime in the future, we'll probably gotta do some widening and so forth, particularly with Eastern. And one issue that we constantly hear is it's one of our property values. What I have seen many years on this council, that's really kind of a focus issue that I would think has ever happened. But, you know, and of course, I didn't know about the, the other properties on the corner that are already zoned, C-three. So, regardless of what we do, we're not gonna change the environment.
I know for me, it's, I'm pretty consistent with what I say, but, you know, if you do the math, it's fifty-eight percent of the individuals opposed it. I know it's, goes by square footage or, you know, total area. And so, I kinda hate that about our charter, but it's, it's what it goes by.
Robert, it's not charter, that's state law.
Oh, state law, okay, I'm sorry.
Works.
I hate that, but if you're curious, it was fifty-eight percent of the people that own property and of the people that they were able to contact, it's seventy-one percent. You know, it's, I, you know, being an area I represent, it's, I always have a hard time going against the citizens. Usually, I believe that they know best what's, they know what's best for their area. And I have a hard time telling somebody that lives in an area what needs to go in next to them, even if I think differently. Unless I have information that they don't have, and I think they know all the facts here, it's just, it's gonna be hard for me to look all these individuals in the eyes and go against the majority of the property owners in that area.
Make a motion?
Well, if it's up to me, I'm making a motion to deny.
I'd second that motion.
We have a motion to deny in a second. Any other comments in the council? No, would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Terry Kavner?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item is denied.
So, we appreciate what you're trying to do, if you can somehow get something that the neighbors out there like, you know, it's, it's... This is tough, I want you, this is honestly very tough for us, it really is. We, we want businesses to be...
I don't vote on mine, but, you know, the, you're going to build the sort of cross-streets unfair that I think it'd be in a competition to do.
Item number seven, or excuse me, item number eight is considered rezoning application number RZ-928, located in the southwest quarter of Section Twenty-five Township Ten North, Range Three West, being north of southwest Thirty-Fourth Street and east of Eastern Avenue, from R-one, single-family dwelling district to R-two, two-family dwelling district, and C-three, general commercial district, and approval ordinance number eight zero zero one five, application by Stephen Headley, planning commission recommended approval of this four-three. Do you have a motion on this?
Yeah, and I wanna clarify, I voted, or I made a motion for denial based on traffic noise and possible drainage and those are the type of issues that I'm concerned about that the neighbors have expressed, just wanted to be clear about that. But I'll make a motion to deny this.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you, thank you. We have a motion to deny, would you call for the vote, please?
Terry Kavner?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item is denied. Item number nine is considered a preliminary plat for the meadow, or excuse me, let's get going. Item number eight is considered rezoning application number RZ-928. Oh, wait, just go to the, sorry. Item number nine is considered a preliminary plat for the meadow at Southmore Edition, located in southwest quarter of Section Twenty-five Township Ten North, Range Three West, being north of southwest Thirty-Fourth Street and east of Eastern Avenue, application by Stephen Headley, planning commission recommended approval of this four-three.
I have a motion to deny.
All right, thank you. We have a motion to deny. We have a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
David Roberts?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Terry Kavner?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item is denied. Item number ten is considered ordinance number eight zero one fifteen, amending Part Four, Chapter One, Article G, Section Four dash one-seven-one, four dash one-seven-two, and four dash one-seven-three, the Moore Municipal Code requiring structures to be locked, modifying offspring notification, requiring spaying and neutering of vicious and potentially vicious canines, requiring microchipping of vicious or potentially vicious canines, requiring annual registration, providing separability, and providing for repealer.
Mayor and Council, several weeks ago, Officer John Fryreer from Animal Control came to me and asked me about firming up or making our potentially vicious, vicious canine ordinance a little bit more strict. He then provided me with some suggestions in an ordinance. One of those suggestions is currently a cause for the canines, when they're outside, to be in a secure pen. We modified that a little bit to make it even clearer that it would have to be a locked pen. The pen would have to be locked, the padlock or combination lock. He also suggested that we put into the ordinance the microchipping in case the canines do escape from their pen and do escape from the canine owner's yard. It provides for a spay and neutering of any canine declared to be potentially vicious or vicious. So, those are the modifications in this ordinance that Officer Fryreer thought would be good suggestions.
Annual registrations.
And the registrations. They're, they're required, they're required right now, once they have been declared vicious or potentially vicious, to register the canine and provide an insurance policy in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. What we want to do with that is to make sure people follow up with that on an annual basis and provide the documentation to Animal Control where the canine is and that the insurance policy is still in effect and hasn't been canceled after it was provided to Animal Control.
Mr. Kavner, do, do insurance companies cancel because of this, out of curiosity?
That's a Jason question.
Well, no, what I'm, what I'm saying is, somebody would go out, purchase that policy, bring it down to Animal Control, show them a copy of the policy, do their registration, and then let it lapse or three months later, cancel it without coming in and notifying Animal Control.
Yeah, I got you, I was just really, I was just curious, I think it's good.
It's out there, it's something we would deal with. But, but the city can be enlisted as a named insurer, you get copies of every cancellation. All you have to do is require the city to be...
It's not required now, so if we could have the, you know...
That way, if they cancel it, non-pay or whatever, you get copies of it.
The city would be notified then?
Yeah, just be named insurer, or this one's sure, I'm sorry, this one's sure. What constitutes a potentially vicious canine? Is it one of vices?
A potentially, a potentially vicious canine is one that would approach someone where they have a right to be, where the individual has a right to be, in an aggressive manner, but does not cause bodily injury to that person. The person is quick enough to get away from them before they get bit or they, you know, have, have to do something to ward off an attack. A vicious canine is one that does cause bodily injury to an individual or kills other animals of livestock.
Randy, you might also just very briefly explain how the process is. That's the determination that's made for these canines of vicious or potentially...
Process that we've had here for many, many years is that when a canine is thought to be vicious, a citation is issued for what's called an administrative hearing. That administrative hearing has to be held within ten days of issuing the citation. The judge hears evidence at that hearing to determine whether or not the canine is vicious or potentially vicious. If he makes that determination that the canine is vicious or potentially vicious, then an order is issued from the judge. That order requires now the registrations, the photographs, the construction of a pen, the providing of the insurance policy in order for that individual to keep their canine. They're given a review date. There's some other requirements like posting signs and then doing something of that nature. Then, they're given a review date on that order, which is approximately thirty days away from the hearing date, gives them an opportunity to construct the pen according to the minimum standards that are in the ordinance and to get all their other requirements done. If the individual shows up and has those requirements done, routinely what the city does is we will then make a motion to dismiss the criminal part of harboring a vicious canine. That gets dismissed in somewhat of a plea bargain in exchange for the people coming into compliance. But, once they've come into compliance and once that canine has been deemed vicious or potentially vicious, that order stays with that canine forever. That's, that's the process, the process on how it works.
How many, how many orders do we have like that existing? Do you have any idea?
I have no idea. God, do you have any idea how many, how many orders we have on vicious or potentially vicious canines?
Oh, per year, I'm gonna guess maybe ten tops, ten per year, that's just a guess.
And we've had this ordinance for nineteen years, twenty years.
Can we, can we add cats?
They can put cats in there.
That'd be awesome.
They go in the...
Are you talking about putting the cats in with the vicious dogs?
Hey, either way, either way.
Cats in with the dogs. What's the cause?
Being a dog owner and walking by dogs, anything that can help Animal Control take control and stuff, we've had some problems in our neighborhood and I'm, I'm in favor of anything we can do to help them do their job better.
I want to make that a motion?
Yes, I make a motion for approval.
All right, thank you, thank you. We have a motion in a second. Thank you, Randy. Would you call for the vote, please?
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Terry Kavner?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item carries. Item number eleven is considered awarding bid number one-five-one-six dash zero-zero-one, purchase and installation of furniture for the station at Central Park Recreation Center to Admiral Express in the amount of a hundred and twenty-four thousand, point and forty dollars, eighteen cents.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, the city solicited bids for the furniture for the station at Central Park. We received two. The lowest bid was from Admiral Express in the amount of a hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and forty dollars and eighteen cents. This is a budgeted expense for the park and the rec center. Staff's recommendations to award the bid fifteen sixteen dash zero-zero-one to Admiral Express. With that, I'll be happy to take any questions.
Move to approve.
It's over.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any other questions or comments? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Terry Kavner?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number twelve is considered awarding RFP number one-four-one-five dash zero-one-two, purchase and installation of all-inclusive playground equipment for Central Park to ACS Playground Adventures Incorporated in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars. Now, this is for the handicap part of it, right?
Yes, yes, yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, the city solicited proposals for an all-inclusive playground for Central Park. This playground would be for children of all abilities. And as many of you know, this is the culmination of really of a lot of years and a lot of dreams for a lot of people. I think this effort really began with Leadership Moore eight or nine years ago. This will be one of the only, if not the only, fully accessible playgrounds in Oklahoma, so we're extremely proud about that. And as what we've done in the past with our new playgrounds is we've assigned a theme to them and because the architecture in the park is a railroad theme, that we asked that the design include that theme. We had seven playground companies submit proposals and hopefully you see that, that theme in the design. We had a committee, as we've done in the past, we did it a little different this time. The committee was made up of staff, Parks Board member Janie Mylin. We also included a Central Park stakeholder, Marlene Wood, and Orly Beeler with the Yambucks, and they're all here. They reviewed all the proposals, we narrowed it down to two. The committee is recommending that RFP fourteen fifteen dash zero-one-two be awarded to ACS Playgrounds in the amount of three hundred thousand. We brought a lot of playgrounds to you over the eight or so, I think, since we got the quarter cent sales tax for parks. That includes the ones destroyed by the tornado. But you're familiar with ACS, they've done the playground at Veterans Park, Parmley. They're getting ready to do the one at Kewana's and they provide excellent service, they do great install, and they're very accessible before and after, after the install. So, we're very pleased with their work. This is a budgeted expenditure, we, we will purchase this with the quarter cent park sales tax. And I know that there's a lot of passion for this project and Ms. Mylin and Mr. Beeler are here and they'd like to speak to that, Mayor, if that's okay with you.
Sure. How long is it gonna take, Todd, to approve it?
Hey, Todd, while they're coming, while they're coming up, will there be accessible parking and bathrooms and buildings next to it and everything?
Yeah, it is very adjacent to the, to the parking lot.
Thanks. Janie, do you guys wanna speak on this at all?
I guess I'm supposed to speak first, and I, well, first of all, I want to, I wanna thank Todd Jensen and his staff. I think they have done an excellent job of working on this project, as well as this, as the whole park project. And I was impressed by the, the work they did in the RFP process, and also their choosing the vendor and using not only our input, but the input of interested citizens in the establishment of this park. Our history on this, you all know, we have been involved in this now for about four years. And this comes at a wonderful time for us because we have seen that this park is going to be very unique. It's gonna be unique in the state of Oklahoma, and our research has indicated that there are very few parks that are gonna have 100 percent, 100 percent accessibility. And that, I think, is the city should be proud of, having such a park as, such a playground as this, as well as their park. Yambucks has primarily one goal, and that is creating independence mobility for people with disabilities. And this meets those goals 100 percent. So I just wanna thank you all for your help, and I wanna also mention that more years than I care to mention, I have worked with cities. And I can say that in all honesty, the time that I have spent with the city staff and with city management, and some of, some of you as city councilmen, and working on this project, has been fantastic. I have never had this kind of cooperation. I can't think of any time in the last several years that I've had this kind of cooperation. And I've done a lot, a lot of projects with cities and counties and special districts. So I wanna thank you all for a very good job.
Thank you.
I might say one thing about Yambucks. I was relatively unfamiliar with them until they became involved in this project. And then for a brief period, I was actually part of their organization. But basically, it says, what they said, they solely exist to make life better for other people. And one of their major projects that I was just amazed at, they, this is the national organization, they build tricycles, and I think they're basically custom-peded to the individual, so that children and sometimes those above the small child stage have a sensibility to the outside world. So it's a organization that I've developed a great deal of respect for, and have been pleased that they have been so interested in this project.
You may also recall that they made a very generous donation to this project, which we still have that money, of course, and that money will be put towards, I think, some of the signage and some of the things that will be a part of the project.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's been an amazing journey. I've been involved with this project for quite some time. It began with a discussion about how we could raise funds to provide a 100 percent accessible playground for our city. And it moved from there to our parks, our Future VOS campaign, and from there to the stakeholders' meetings for Central Park, and, and now we're here tonight to present to you this playground for approval that is accessible for all children. It's exciting and rewarding for all of those of us who have been involved, Marlene and Orly and myself, in the process of recommending this steam engine-inspired playground. It has assorted freestanding components that allow children of all abilities to play and explore with their family and their friends. And I think what's most important about this is for all ages, it's for the young and the young at heart. And we're very pleased to be able to recommend this all-inclusive playground to you for approval tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate all your work.
Well, I will gladly make a motion to approve this item.
All right.
Bring it to the company mentioned by staff.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Terry Kavner?
Yes.
Excuse me. David Roberts?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Melissa Hahn?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item carries. Item number 13 is considered approval of the contract with Poe and Associates Incorporated for professional engineering services for the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program. And I believe we have four of these, right? All the same.
Yes. Mayor and Council, items 13 and 16 are companion items. Staff requested, RF, request for proposals on engineering services to take care of the needs for the HUD disaster improvement projects throughout the pathway of the tornado. These, we received approximately 20 to 25 submittals. We interviewed 13 firms, and out of those 13 firms, these four firms were selected to do the necessary engineering for the infrastructure improvements throughout the pathway of the 2013 tornado. If there's any questions or issues, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
All four of the contracts are exactly alike, and we will use sort of these firms sort of on a rotating basis for various projects as they come up, as well as some of the projects that we were specifically aware of. Some of the firms had more or less of an expertise in that area or another, perhaps. But these firms, several of which we've, I think probably all of which we've previously used and are very well-known and well-regarded firms.
So the next four items are all?
They're all exactly alike, just, just four contracts, sort of standby contracts, if you will, for these four engineering firms.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Okay, thank you, Senator.
Does this have to be, you have to give each individually, or they're all together?
Yep, all individually.
Now, that question, has HUD approved the contract? Land judge?
Yes. Has HUD approved the language in the contract?
Okay, all right. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote?
David Roberts?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Melissa Hahn?
Abstain.
Terry Kavner?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Yes. Item carries. Item number 14 is considered approval of a contract with Mieschek and Associates PLC for professional engineering services for the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program. Do we have a motion?
Question to approve.
Second.
Thank you, thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Melissa Hahn?
Yes.
Terry Kavner?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item carries. Item number 15 is considered approval of a contract with CEC Corporation for professional engineering services for Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Say it.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hahn?
Yes.
Terry Kavner?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item carries, excuse me. Item number 16 is considered approval of the contract with Kabinist Engineering for professional engineering services for the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program.
Motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Say it.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Terry Kavner?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Melissa Hahn?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item carries. Item number 17 is discussed, considered, and deemed appropriate, authorize the appointment of legal counsel for City of Moore Police Officer Brian Clarkson pursuant to 11 OS and 23-101, and any other relevant state law for representation in case number CJ-2015-357, Nair Rodriguez as next of kin to the estate of Louis Rodriguez versus Warren Theaters LLC, Oklahoma Warren Theaters LLC, Brian Clarkson, Tyler Hauser, Chad Strange, and the City of Moore XL, the Moore Police Department, Joseph Bradley, and Ryan, Ryan Menard, excuse me.
Mayor, you may recall that the city council authorized legal representation in this lawsuit for two of our police officers that were involved in that case, Joseph Bradley and Ryan Menard. At that time, we indicated to you that we very well could be back to you asking for you to authorize representation for Officer Clarkson. He was the officer that was not technically on duty, but he was working for Warren Theaters as security that evening. The attorneys are all advising us, or have advised us, that based on the circumstances and on his discussions or testimony, that, that they believe that the argument will be made and can be made, that he was effectively acting as a police officer as he was involved in that incident. Our primary purpose is to make sure that he gets good representation, and so we would recommend that you approve this.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, thank you both. You know, when they're in that uniform, they're always on duty, as far as I'm concerned. Would you call for the vote?
David Roberts?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Melissa Hahn?
Yes.
Terry Kavner?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item carries. At this time, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene the more public works authority meeting. Item number 18 is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular more public works authority meeting held August 17, 2015. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2015, 2016 in the amount of $1,269,410.18.
Moved to approve.
Thank you, thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Melissa Hahn?
Yes.
Terry Kavner?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item carries. At this time, we'll recess the more public works authority meeting and convene the more risk management meeting. Item 19 is consent docket. Item A is accept the minutes of the regular more risk management meeting held August 17, 2015. Item B is approve payment of a court order of workers' compensation settlement in the amount of $10,490.70 to Larry Love for workers' comp number 2015-01912L. Authorize placement on the added reward tax rolls and supli, excuse me, supplement the budget accordingly. Item C is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2015, 2016 in the amount of $289,894.91.
Moved to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? This is a consent docket. Would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hahn?
Yes.
Terry Kavner?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item carries. At this time, we'll recess the more risk management meeting and reconvene the city council meeting. Item number 20 is new business. Item A is citizens' form for items not on the agenda. Item B is items from the city council or trustees. Item C is items from the city trust manager. First item is item A. Anyone wanna speak? There's no one signed up. Item B is from the city council. Anybody? Item C is from the city manager.
Just mentioned a couple things briefly. Mayor, you hopefully noticed the big red
truck out front, when it came in. That's the newest fire truck, fire engine that just went in service within the last few days, really, week or so, that city received and the paid for with the public safety sales tax portion of the special sales tax. So we are very thankful to our citizens for the continued support of that and equipping our fire and police departments. Also, just wanted to mention briefly that the 12th Street Railroad Crossing, we are getting a number of complaints on that, as understandably so. We've been in contact with the railroad, and we believe that they will be here in town hopefully this week or very soon. They've indicated they're gonna try to be here this week to make the repairs and rework that crossing, which it's in desperate need of. So hopefully that will happen, but it definitely was good news to hear that. And also just wanted to thank and mention all of the folks, a lot of our folks involved with the Moore War Game. Last Friday night, that, huge attendance there. I think that a lot of folks, a lot of our people were involved and went very well, didn't have any major issues of any sort. So just appreciate those folks out there.
I thought it was Moores here.
Well, it was close. And everybody was excited about that, I think, and that may have indicated some of the attendance boost out there. But it's always good to see that come. It's always good to see no major issues out there, so.
That's good.
That's all.
Okay. Item 21 is adjournment.
So moved. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
Terry Kavner?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Melissa Hahn?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. We adjourn.